Welcome to the April 1st meeting of the Glendale Successory Agency. May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Brotman.
Here.
Sorry, Mayor. Our screen says the general plan is a special meeting.
What?
Special meeting.
Okay, sure. We're calling the special meeting. I have all these. I didn't know which order we were going. Okay. Do I need to repeat it, Mr. Ajemian?
Sure. Councilmember Brotman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Gesakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Asadarian.
Here. May we have your report?
Sure. The agenda for the Tuesday, April 1st, 2025 special public meeting of the city council was posted on March 28, 2025 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right, and what's next?
Next would be item number one, Community Development regarding annual report of on the status of the general plan, a motion accepting the annual progress report on the status of general plan in accordance with state law and noting in filing same.
All right. Mr. Galan?
Mayor Satrian, members of City Council, good afternoon again. This item will be presented by the TAC team of Viliya Zemeditis, our Deputy Director of Community Development for Long Range Planning, and Teresa Santillena, my apologies, our Principal Planner, again for Long Range Planning.
Welcome.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor Satrian, councilmembers. The staff is presenting an overview of the city's general plan. If you don't mind going back one. Thank you. Staff is presenting an overview of the city's general plan elements and housing production data for the 2024 calendar year. State planning law requires that all cities and counties provide an annual progress report and APR on their general plan and housing elements' performance to the city council, the state's Housing and Community Development Department, HCD, and the Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation, formerly called the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. Glendale has prepared its detailed APR in this report and council presentation satisfy that legislative mandate. Please note that this is only an informational report to city council and no decision or approval is required. As a reminder, all cities and counties in California must prepare a long-term comprehensive plan that outlines goals and strategies for a city's physical development. This ensures growth is sustainable, orderly, and aligned with the community's needs and values. General plans include various topical sections called elements. Glendale currently has a total of 10 elements, which include the mandatory elements required by state law. These are identified by an asterisk on the slide. Those would be housing, land use, mobility, circulation, noise, open space and conservation, which are both combined into one element, and safety. The city also has optional elements for air quality, community facilities, historic preservation, and recreation. The state now also requires an environmental justice be addressed in general plans. The next several slides will provide status updates on each of these general plan elements. Land use. Land use is a key component and required element of the general plan. Last comprehensively updated in 1986, this element outlines the vision for land use in the city and includes two main parts. One would be a land use map, which designates areas for different land uses on a parcel-by-parcel basis, and then the land use plan, which provides policy guidance for long-term physical growth and development. Land use element is being comprehensively updated by DeNovo Consulting and Planning Staff, along with the Mobility Element update and the new Environmental Justice element. City council reviewed progress on the land use element update twice last year, and based on council's feedback, the element is being drafted to address the topic areas of land use mix, directed growth, compatible development, urban design, and economic development. The draft will be released early this summer for public comment and accompanied by an extensive public outreach campaign. Last updated in 1998, the current circulation element primarily focuses on safe, efficient, multimodal, though mainly vehicular movement on city streets. A comprehensive update is underway, shifting the focus to creating a safe transportation network for all users. These would be walkers, bicyclists, transit riders, and drivers, and with the element being renamed to the Mobility Element. Update will include goals and policies and implementation actions for complete streets, walking and bicycling, public transit, ride-sharing and carpooling, local and regional traffic demand, environmental health and air quality, parking, and goods movements. These topics were identified last summer during council briefing, and the draft Mobility Element will be released this summer for public comment. The state now requires cities incorporate environmental justice into their general plans. The goal is to create equitable, healthy, and sustainable environments for all residents, particularly those disproportionately impacted by environmental hazards and health risks. The new EJ element will cover pollution, exposure and air quality, access to healthy food, community engagement, and other topics as required by the state. Significant public outreach was conducted last year for the new EJ element, including online survey, pop-up booths at events like Fire Service Day and Cruise Night, updates on the city's GlendalePlan.com, email and social media announcements, and a direct mailer sent to over 40,000 Glendale households in multiple languages. The city council received a progress update on the EJ element last summer, and the draft element is being finalized for public review and comment this summer.
I have a question.
Yes.
I think I might be pro. Am I pro-ten?
Yes.
This month? Yeah, okay. I thought so. So I'll, okay.
Ask yourself.
I'll ask myself. Can I ask a question? Yes. No, the question is just, under the EJ topics, do we not cover heat exposure? As, you know, because we've talked about, I know in the safety element, there'll be a mention of, I guess, building codes that require air conditioning for all multifamily, and, you know, we have a lot of, obviously, a lot of lower-income, moderate and low-income people that don't have air conditioning. Is that, that's not in here, is it?
Heat exposure was best covered under the safety element, though it will be also safe and sanitary homes.
Safe and sanitary homes. Okay. So it is included, because I would think it's obviously an environmental justice issue. Okay, good.
Safety element. Safety element was last updated in 2003, and it seeks to identify and reduce potential risks from natural and man-made hazards, such as earthquakes, wildfire, dangerous animals, and hazardous materials. Recently, the state updated legislative requirements for safety elements, and in line with these new state laws and guidelines, the 2025 Glendale Safety Element update incorporates the most recent best practices related to flooding and wildfire, and also addresses updates to emergency evacuation policies, and also includes a new section on the risks associated with climate change. You'll hear more about the 2025 Safety Element update during its presentation for council's consideration and adoption at this evening's meeting. In 1972, the city adopted an Open Space Conservation and Recreation element, which was later separated into two distinct general plan elements. Adopted in 1993, the Open Space and Conservation element focuses on the planning and management of public open spaces and the conservation of natural resources. Since both Open Space and Conservation are required general plan topics that are closely related, Glendale has combined them into one element. The required element, or not the not-required element, the Recreation element, was adopted in 1996, and this element addresses planning for parks, recreation areas, and recreational programming. In fall of last year, the city released a request for proposal to update both elements, and once the consultant is selected, the amendment process is expected to take two Last comprehensively updated in 2007, the Noise element is a state-required element which provides goals, policies, and programs to control environmental noise and to protect residents from excessive noise exposure. The Noise element is implemented by the Noise Ordinance, which is Title VIII of the Glendale Municipal Code, and is also used in environmental evaluations under CEQA. No updates are currently planned, and may be amended as needed. This slide highlights three general plan elements that are not required by the state. Community Facilities element, which was adopted in 1975, provides information on governmental facilities and non-governmental facilities, such as hospitals, religious institutions, and other community services. However, the element has not been updated in 50 years, and much of this information is now available through other resources. As such, this element could be deleted from the general plan. Adopted over 30 years ago, the Air Quality element was created to address the relationship between land use and air quality, aiming to reduce air pollutant emissions. However, it is outdated due to more recent environmental state legislation, and like the Community Facilities element, the role of the Air Quality element is now somewhat obsolete, and so council may consider deleting it as well. The Historic Preservation element, last comprehensively updated in 1997, identifies important community resources and outlines processes to identify and designate historic properties. While no immediate updates are planned, a review and update may be necessary after the upcoming citywide historic survey is completed.
Can you, I have a question.
Yes.
The Community Facilities element.
Yes.
Are there other elements that incorporate the community facilities now, and which ones are they?
Other elements allude to an existing community facilities element?
I think it's important for us to take stock of what community facilities we have, what we want to envision for the future, you know, based on needs in our community. And so, is there, I don't know whether it's through the recreational plan that would be put together, that would incorporate the community facilities. Is there some other plan that includes assessing that?
Mayor Satrian, the Community Facilities is essentially listing all the different various agents, well, facilities, such as libraries, schools, and other government entities or facilities as well. What we could do is update that. So it would be based on city council's direction, whether you'd like to perhaps consider deleting it, or whether you would like to actually update it, since a lot of the information in there is outdated. So, staff is not recommended one way or another. It is just an optional element according to state law, and we could either revisit it and update it, or it could be potentially deleted, since much of this information was put together at a time when the internet was not available, and so people relied on the Community Facilities element to obtain information where the schools are located, where are the libraries, where are the religious institutions, where are the hospitals in the neighborhood?
So is it just the list, or is it a plan for, I mean, I see it as an opportunity for us not to just take stock of what we have, but also say, hey, these are all the areas we're, like, lacking in? And so as we're planning our land use element, or, you know, going through, I don't know, different projects, we assess where the needs are for those facilities, and those facilities may vary in use, right? So maybe the library in one place is being converted to something else, and then a park that currently doesn't have a community facility, or there's no community recreation room around that neighborhood, we would need to bring one in. So what I'm asking is, what I don't want to do is duplicate efforts. So what I'm asking is, is there another place that we can do this assessment, and if it's just the list, or is it an opportunity for us to also plan for the future?
Mayor Satrian, yes, it's both. And so what we can do is that we can, as part of the review of the Open Space and Conservation and Recreation elements and their RFP process, and update, we can definitely make note of any facilities that are available through the Parks Department. That could be also community facilities as well, and we can also address and come back to city council at a later date. Once, since we have so many elements that are currently being amended and comprehensively updated, we can come back after those have gone through their processes, come back to city council at a later date, and say, we have these other additional elements. These are, this is the content of each of these. Here, we said, you know, what we might see, what we might consider amending, and look at that with city council at a later date.
And if we did it through the recreational, like, we would be able to incorporate other needs? I know that there was, about two years ago, questions, at least that I got, about, is there an opportunity to, for example, bring a convention center to Glendale, given its location? But that convention center wouldn't necessarily be an open space and recreational. It would be more for the business community, right? Or our nonprofits, or, you know, regional partners. So I'm just trying to figure out where all of that assessment for our city could be done through. And if that's it, then I'm okay with it. I just try and understand.
We appreciate the comments and inquiries, so.
So would it?
We would be able to take a look at it and get back to you at a later date with regards to the Community Facilities.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Yep.
And on the air quality one, so you're saying the air quality might be redundant, because most of what was, what's in our current element is found in the, in the other elements? Or where does, where does any, you know, anything that we would be planning to do around air quality, where would that fall?
Councilmember Brotman, the air quality element had specific goals and mandates and policies based in, on the mid-'90s. It was adopted in 1994. There's been a lot of state legislation, especially when it, in particular to the greenhouse gas emission regulations. The city is also considering the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, the CAP, and so the CAP really focuses on greenhouse gas emissions. So that particular document, the CAP, would be best served in looking at air quality.
Okay. Does it, though, look, I mean, I know it looks at greenhouse gas emissions, but then there's, there are a lot of these other, you know, smog, what do you call them? The smog precursors, I think they call them, you know, NOCs and SOCs and all these other articulate matters, and so we don't, that probably isn't really going to be fully addressed in the CAP, right?
The CAP specifically addresses targeting greenhouse gas emissions, and again, what I would suggest is to, for us, the staff, to come back at a later date to discuss these three additional elements.
Okay, that sounds like a good idea. And that would have to happen anyway, if we were going to eliminate one, right? We have to make that decision, so you have to come back to us.
It would be definitely a formal process, and I think staff would come back to city council first to discuss these three elements, before any official proceeding begins. And lastly, the housing element is a required element and one of the most crucial components of the general plan, because it outlines the city's strategy for meeting the housing needs of its current and its future population. State law requires that the housing element be updated every eight years, and we are now currently in the sixth housing element cycle. In California, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, known as RENA, is a key part of the housing element, and Teresa will expand on the RENA topic in a few moments. The goals of the housing element are also listed on this slide, and each goal includes its own set of policies and programs, some of which will be described in the next section on the APR. So for that, I would like to turn the presentation over to Teresa.
Thank you, Vilia. Each year by April 1st, jurisdictions in California are required to submit the APR to the state. This reports on any activity related to the general plan for the previous calendar year. A primary purpose of the APR is to report progress made towards housing element goals, including both program implementation and production of housing units, as measured against the RENA allocation. The middle of the APR is crucial to ensure that a jurisdiction maintains housing element certification. Glendale has successfully completed and submitted the APR each year. As Vilia mentioned, the RENA is a key component of the housing element. Jurisdictions in California were allocated significantly more units in the sixth cycle as the state sought to address a statewide housing shortage. We can see from this table that Glendale was allocated more than 13,000 housing units across all income levels for the sixth cycle RENA. It's important to note that the city is not required to build all of the units that are allocated through the RENA process. What the city is required to do is ensure that we have the capacity for the total RENA, based on our existing zoning and land use policies, as well as our development processes, so that private developers have the ability to produce housing in the city. The housing element includes a sites inventory that demonstrates this capacity, and long-range planning staff monitors the sites inventory, as well as all housing applications, to ensure that the city continues to meet this requirement. The housing element also includes a quantified objective estimate of housing production. That's based on past performance and funding availability, construction trends, land availability, and programs that are being implemented in the planning period. Glendale's Quantified Objectives identify that 5,510 new units across all income levels is a more likely development scenario than the full RENA allocation. This table from the APR shows progress made towards the sixth cycle RENA. The information for 2024 is highlighted in red. Progress towards the RENA is based on the number of building permits issued for housing projects. Last year, building permits were issued for 305 new units. So far, in the sixth cycle, we have achieved 1,930 units towards our RENA. Though we are making progress, it's unlikely that the full RENA allocation will be achieved. However, there is potential for the city to reach the number of new units outlined in our Quantified Objectives. We are less than halfway through our eight-year cycle, and we have issued permits for 35% of the units identified in the Quantified Objectives. We've also achieved development of a significant percentage of housing for very low, low, and above moderate income levels that are outlined in the Quantified Objectives. And though progress towards the RENA is based on issuance of building permits, the APR also tracks the number of projects that have been approved, as well as certificates of occupancy that have been issued for housing projects. In 2024, a total of 428 housing units were approved, and a total of 480 units were completed. Finally, the APR provides information regarding housing element programs. In 2024, Glendale continued to make significant progress towards implementing more than 30 programs that aim to preserve and produce affordable housing, provide housing-related services to the community, and ensure the city remains in compliance with state housing law. The housing element programs consist of both new and existing ongoing activities. An incomplete list of notable actions is before you on this slide. This includes the monitoring of that sites inventory list, updates to the city's ADU ordinance, as well as initial surveying of ADU property owners to monitor affordability levels, ongoing efforts to improve the quality of existing housing, conserve affordable units, and the administration of the Rental Rights Program, continued direct financial assistance to nonprofit developers to increase the supply of affordable housing, administration of several ongoing programs for lower-income residents, including Section 8 and the Elderly Nutrition Program, as well as an array of services offered for individuals experiencing homelessness. Additionally, the GMC was updated to simplify design review and provide applicants more surety in the development process. The Glendale housing element can be found online at www.GlendalePlan.com. GlendalePlan.com also includes information on each of the general plan elements that are being adopted or undergoing an update, as outlined by Vilia earlier in this presentation. And if you'd like more information on the APRs, HCD compiles data from each jurisdiction to track housing production across all of California. A dashboard on their website at hcd.ca.gov shows the APRs for every city, county, and region across the state. With that, staff is recommending that the council make a motion to accept and file this report. This concludes our presentation, and we are available for any questions at this time.
So, back to the community facilities. I know you're recommending for us to take this out from our general plan, right? No? You're not? Okay.
Mayor, Mayor Satrian.
Or did I get it wrong? Okay.
Right now, we are just providing an update of the status of each of these elements. And so there is no recommendation that any of the elements be amended or deleted at this time. We're simply, we're simply informing city council that this is the status, and these would be your options, if you'd like. And we will come back at a later date regarding these other three additional optional elements.
Right. Well, I mean, I guess I would pose the question, then, to my council colleagues, if they would be interested in having an assessment of our community facilities in some sort of report or not in the future. I know we're just filing the report today, so... Or is that something that we need to bring up at a later time, or as a separate item?
Mayor Satrian, staff respectfully requests that if we do come back, that we come back after we have completed the general plan, land use, mobility, circulation, and environmental justice elements, and have made progress on the Open Space and Conservation and Recreation elements, simply because at this point in time, based on this intense workload that also includes other projects, we just don't have the ability to tackle the three additional elements until that date.
Are we able to incorporate it into the open and recreational?
You have our word, because we are going to be working with the Parks Department in regards to the Open Space Conservation Recreation Elements, and we will make special note of co-use facilities as part of the Parks update.
Cool. All right. Are there questions or comments, or are there...
Yeah, a few. All right. Thanks for all that. And I know you're doing a lot of work. I know having three elements come to us this year is a big deal.
Well, and thank you, because...
Or four, including this one.
We actually, we have four, and then two pending, and we are a mighty staff of three long-range planning staff members, division. So, yes.
We appreciate it.
We do our best.
We get it. Some things that we talked about in the briefing, but I'll bring them up now for everybody. So we, I see that as of the end of calendar 2024, we permitted 1,930 new units. We talked about ownership units versus rental units. So you were going to tell us out of that, I know it's going to be a minuscule number, but I still want to hear the number. How many of those are ownership units?
Sure. So, thank you for the question, Councilmember Brotman. In 2024, nine of the units were ownership units. In 2023, nine, again. And in 2022, eight were ownership units.
Okay. And I know we have a, one of our programs, or one of our policies, I guess we call them programs, is around homeownership, or increased homeownership.
Increased opportunity for homeownership, yes.
Okay. Increased opportunity for homeownership. I think, and I noted that there are two kind of separate plans or projects or tracks on that. And I think you've heard from a few of us over, you know, the last year or two, about, you know, an interest in seeing how we provide more opportunities for people to buy into the market somehow. Maybe not big, single-family homes, but maybe through other types of, like, condos, duplexes, courtyard apartment, whatever, whatever it might be, right? So definitely would like, with all the other work you're doing, at some point, maybe it's through the land use element or some other way to start helping us think of, what are some of the things that we should be doing, whether it's lobbying Sacramento on the condo liability laws, or it's other things we can be doing with zoning, through SB9, whatever we can do, you know, to kind of open up some opportunities. So that was, that was one thing. The other thing is this 1,930 that we've permitted so far, I forget if you, if you said, how many are, like, what we call affordable, or below-market rate? What percentage of that?
That would be on this slide here. So this slide shows us the affordability levels. On the very left-hand side, we have the very low, low, moderate, and above-moderate income levels there. So according to this, in 2021, which is just the beginning of the housing element cycle, we had two very low-income units. In 2022, we had 203 very low, and in 2024, we had 38. And then we also see that we had 312 low-income units in 2022, and another 29 permitted in 2024.
Okay. What does that all add up to?
So the totals are 243 very low, 341 low, and 1,346 above moderate income.
Okay, so no moderate, just above moderate income. Okay.
No moderate thus far, yes.
Okay. And when we did that thing where we converted, you know, we were part of that consortium, I forget what it was called, it had a long acronym, but that consortium that converted, like, four buildings, we don't get credit for those as moderate?
No, unfortunately, during the preparation of the No, unfortunately, during the preparation of the Housing Element, staff did try to lobby HCD to say, look, we have this incredible moderate income housing project. Unfortunately, it didn't meet certain criteria that the state was looking for in order to get credit, and we were not able to achieve credit for those moderate income units.
Just to add to what Teresa said, the conversion actually occurred several weeks before the cutoff date. And so, had the conversion occurred several weeks later, we would have been able to count it as part of their sixth Housing Element cycle. But due to the timelines, unfortunately, did not meet the cutoff, and so, we were not able to include that.
That's interesting. And then, last thing is ADUs, well, no, I have one of the, ADUs, maybe you can explain what we're doing, because I guess some of them, maybe we can include as affordable, but you're doing a survey, you want to mention what that's all about?
Yes. So, one of our Housing Element Programs includes surveying ADU property owners to ascertain what rents are being charged for ADUs, so that we can see if it falls into one of those lower-income rent levels. Right now, unfortunately, without having the data, we have to record all ADUs that are being permitted at the above moderate income level. But we can go back, once we have data, and correct any of our APRs from previous years to include those more affordable units.
Okay. And it is interesting that, I guess I see here, about 40% of the permits issued in this RENA cycle have been ADUs.
Yes.
Pretty amazing.
We continue to exceed the expectation that's set in the Housing Element. We had a goal of 159 ADU permits per year, and we have exceeded 200 each year so far.
Okay. And then the last thing is, I brought this up also in the briefing, is carrots and sticks. So, I know that there are probably not a lot of teeth to this, but as the cycles have gone on, there have been more and more. So, I know there's like builder's remedy if you don't have a qualified element, so we're not subject to that. But there's SB 35, and I'm not sure how that kicks in for jurisdictions that are not, is it that they're not meeting their numbers? Maybe if you could talk about some of the sticks, and then the carrot is this pro-housing designation, and there's a process to get that. I'm not quite sure what we get from that, but maybe these are things, maybe that's something that we want to consider.
Yes. Thank you again. Good question, Councilmember Brotman. So, yes, SB 35 did include, at the time that Housing Elements were being prepared for the sixth cycle, if it was found that a jurisdiction was not meeting the expectations from the previous fifth cycle, they were subject to some more streamlined ministerial types of approvals. Luckily, Glendale fulfills the RENA goals. As far as total number of units, we far exceeded the goal of the fifth cycle. We did not meet all of the income categories, unfortunately. So, we were not subject to that type of SB 35 action during the preparation of this Housing Element. However, we do still accept applications under SB 35 should they meet certain criteria, which would subject a developer to streamlined ministerial approval. As far as the pro-housing designation that you mentioned, this is administered by the state. So far, there's been about 50 jurisdictions in the state that have qualified as pro-housing jurisdictions. What's involved is a pretty extensive application, which is basically a point system. So, a city or a county would apply, they would need to show 45 points on their application. Those points could be for actions that either the jurisdiction has taken or will undertake to increase production of housing. So, it would require an extensive conversation for us to have with council to see which of those types of pro-housing actions would be appropriate for the city to take. We can bring you back a more comprehensive report on that pro-housing designation in the future, but each action would warrant careful consideration from the council.
Okay. I know you have a lot on your plate, and I don't know what we get by being a pro-housing city. If it opens up funding for us, it might be worth it, but just keep that as something that, at least, I would be interested in exploring if we think that we could get it, and if it comes with something that is more than just bragging rights, I'd be interested in it.
I would actually, just off of that, want to take a moment, say thank you to Councilmember Kusakian, because in December, when we had a meeting with our state representatives, he brought up an important point about us meeting our numbers and actually being good stewards, but not being rewarded as a city for that. And so, I know that after that discussion, our Senator, Senator Perez, is working on introducing a bill that has to do with that, and so, I hope that staff can also coordinate with their office to see how we can benefit from all of this and that discussion and a potential bill.
Thank you, Mayor Sotrin.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions on RENA numbers, and so, we, beginning of 2021, it's every eight years, right? Am I correct?
Correct.
For RENA allocations, yeah. So, it was 13,425 units, we built 1,930, and we are basically obligated, based on the numbers, to build 11,000, no?
Thank you, Councilmember Garpetyan. What we are obligated to do is show that we have the capacity to produce 11,495 more housing units.
Got it. I stand corrected. So, their expectation is that we build 11,495, but we have to show that we have the capacity to do so?
Right. They, you know, in an ideal world, the state would love to see us produce that amount of housing, but understanding that it's not cities itself that's building housing, it's private development, what they want for cities to do is to make sure that land use policies and programs are creating an environment that private developers would have the ability to build this housing.
Right. So, if we create that environment through our, you know, zone change and code changes and housing, you know, different, different districts were more housing, and provide, let's say we provide that 10,000 or 11,000 units, that will be, if you consider two points of, I don't know why is it 2.7, but it's 2.7 people per unit, basically, they calculate it, I don't know why it's not three or it's not two, but it's 2.7, that would be around 31,000 people, which is 15% of our population, will be 15% population increase. And based on our numbers, 14% of people don't have cars in Glendale. If the rest do, there's 26,000 cars, and if they make two trips a day, it will be 56,000 trips, and it will be around 1.6 million trips a year in Glendale, which we cannot afford. And on one hand, and there are no funding in between, there are no resources for us to upgrade our infrastructures and, you know, the utilities that we have, the roads, I don't want to say crumbling, but they need work. We need, we would need more parking, we would need more of everything. And I think one of the issues we have to lobby is these numbers. I don't know, how do they come up with 13,000 units for Glendale that we are, and we need to provide, or we need to generate, or provide some sort of a zoning for it to be the capacity to build that many units? But there are no help, there are no fundings, there are no resources for us to be able to do even one-third of that, or half of that. So, I think one of the issues we need to put on our roster to lobby for is resources. And if it could be part of our programs, if it could be part of our city managers to do this, to add this to RENA, to our lobbying list when we go up to Sacramento next time. So...
It was already on, Mr. Garpetyan. We did do that when we were up there, and it was part of the list that we provided through our elected officials on the state level for us to work on, and that was kind of what I was alluding to.
And when was that?
We talked about it in December, when they were here, and then when we did the California or Glendale Advocacy Day, when we were up in Sacramento just a few weeks ago. So...
So, that's great, and I appreciate that. And I think we need to follow up, and because with one or two advocacy days, I don't think they will listen to us much, but we have to keep the pressure on, and I appreciate you being up there on Advocacy Day, and hopefully this year, we, I missed that email anyways, but it's, we just, what I'm saying is, we need resources, and we have to keep banging on that same door to get some funding from them, in order to do what they want.
Briefly, we are already having discussions with Senator Perez's office regarding those RENA numbers. We had started those discussions a couple months back, in addition to the legislative day they did here. We've been meeting with their staff to figure out, how do we, as the mayor highlighted, receive a credit for what we've done, but also, how do we make these numbers be a little more accurate and reasonable? As you acknowledge, it's a very high number, could be a potential high, extremely high population increase, but we are actively working with their office now to figure out how we can make those kind of changes and work more collaboratively with HCD.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Garpetyan, I think I would actually like to add on the funding. Part of that needs to be done through the lobbyists that we have for Sacramento, and I know that she has a long follow-up list that she's supposed to be doing, but, you know, I know that our staff is communicating with them, and her specifically, for us to have our own input would be worthwhile.
Yeah. The RENA numbers is, you know, the issue of the RENA numbers is nothing new. We've been, we've been talking about it for last, at least as I remember, for last decade. We had several advocacy days, and, you know, we met with them when I was part of SCAG at that time, in the, from 2015, 16, 17, 18, and it just, it just isn't happening. I think we need to...
I think we kind of took a little bit of a different approach, where our senator's now introducing something, so I think just us following that would be...
I think this is something that it cannot only be done by one city. We have to collaborate with every other city through contract cities, League of California cities, and SCAG and everything, so we can push the same issue together at the same time. So, we will get some reasonable numbers or requests from them. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
In terms of building more, housing affordability is an issue that's really on everyone's minds, is probably one of the biggest issues, not just here locally, but throughout the state. So, in terms of building more affordable housing, how much would you quantify us being at the mercy of private developers willing to do it versus us being able to control where and how, and how much affordable housing we get to construct?
Councilmember Kusakian, counsel, as Teresa alluded to, much of the development is coming from the private sector, aside from the city-sponsored projects, which we are all well aware of, the ones that are 900, East Broadway, the Piedmont Senior Housing Conversion, the project under construction right now next to the 134 on Pacific, those are all city-funded affordable housing projects, 100%, which, those are also shown on your screen as the larger numbers for the 2022 because of their permit issuance during that particular year. The other, the other projects that are coming forward are privately funded developments that are addressing the inclusion, the city's inclusionary housing requirement, which is a requirement of 15% affordable housing units, either on-site or through an in-loop payment fee for any project that has eight units or more. So, this affects medium to larger residential projects. Obviously, that touches on all of the larger projects in downtown, including the Sears redevelopment projects, and also the ONI projects on North Brand. So, we do gain some affordable housing through private development, but aside from the city-sponsored ones, there are no 100% affordable projects, at least not yet. There are developers in other jurisdictions that are trying to utilize the state's density bonus laws to greatly exceed any density permitted by right, and thereby providing affordable housing projects that are greater than the minimum, but that is a rarity, and that does not happen here in Glendale.
And I can, I understand how that when the private developers are developing, or coming up with their sheets as to what pans out in the math, how it works for them, that they have certain criteria they have to meet for their investors, et cetera, but I think that oftentimes, what we're seeing here on the council is that we are on the receiving end of these projects that'll come, that'll increase their density using the state guidelines. And oftentimes, what we see is that, like, for instance, if an older building that has lower rents is demolished, and the new building that is put in its place and has quote-unquote "affordable" units in it, what is considered affordable today is far greater than what was considered affordable before, and trying to figure out how we can address those dilemmas is something that we're going to have to grapple with here. I don't necessarily have any other questions about this. I do want to thank you for the work that you're doing. I think that we do need to update some of our, we need to revisit things about open space, because, you know, the popular refrain nowadays is about higher density, more density, more housing, which is fine, but it's coming at the expense of open space, which about 15, 20 years ago, and perhaps some of the folks who've been here longer than I, like Councilmember Najarian and others, will remember that, you know, we've had continuous calls for more open space south of the 134, pursuing grants through our Parks Department for providing and acquiring space. So, those two things tend to be sometimes at odds with one another, and we have to figure out how we strike that balance, because we are seeing with increased density, a loss of a lot more of our open space in our densest parts of town. So, I don't know how, I've been a longtime advocate of trying to bring our school district to the table to open up the school facilities and allow them to be used as parks. I know Councilmember Garpetyan also joined in on that when he was, when he first was re-elected to this council, so I think that it's something we need to redouble our efforts on. It could be a game changer. And those are my only comments, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
All right.
One more quick comment. I know Councilman Brotman mentioned ownership housing and condominiums, and you, I think you mentioned it, but when is it coming back? When is, when are we going to have a report as to what kind of incentives do we have currently, and what can we work on to incentivize for people to build more condominiums? When is it coming back with our land use element, or general plan amendment?
Councilmember Garpetyan, there is no report coming back at this point in time for regards to the homeownership. As was mentioned during the presentation, there are a number of hurdles, such as the liability insurance that you spoke to, the greater interest rates for condominium projects. These are all somewhat roadblocks in terms of condominium construction, and so, at this point in time, it appears that there was consensus that lobbyists should be used to go to the state to address items such as liability insurance items, things like that. We can try to somewhat look at incentivizing homeownership as part of perhaps a density bonus provision, but that would be coming in subsequently to the land use element.
Thank you.
I'd say two things on that front. One is, there was a list of bills that were sent over, and again, part of our list was addressing the condo liability insurance issue. And I know that there was a list sent over last week of bills that we could offer amendments to. The, the elements that you are working on currently, I think as Councilmember Garpetyan was pointing to the incentive programs, there was a memo that Mr. Calvert had sent over, I think about a year ago, on this issue. I think it would be helpful if that was sent over again for all of us to review. I think it addressed some of... over, again, for all of us to review. I think it addressed some of the issues with, or potential, like first-time homebuyers program, and other hurdles we may have in creating these incentive programs. But I think it would be a nice refresher for all of us.
Yes, Mayor Sotrin, you are correct. There was a memo that Mr. Calvert had generated, was sent to council. I will ask him to take a second look if there is anything that needs to be adjusted or updated, and we'll recirculate back to council.
Great. Thank you. All right. Do you need a motion from us? Yes. Okay. Thank you so much for your hard work and...
I'll make the motion.
All right.
Second.
All right. Roll call.
Councilmember Brotman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Kusakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Asadurian.
Yes. Thank you. Next.
Be adjournment.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
All right. We are adjourned.